Tonight, our pledge of allegiance will be led by two distinguished students from our district. They are Andrew McDonald and Brianna Lakowski, fifth grade students from Mann's Elementary School. Principal Grant said that both Andrew and Brianna were selected to represent Mann's due to their outstanding leadership and positive attitudes at school. They both go out of their way to be kind and welcoming to all at Mann's. They are great role models for Mann's beliefs of be kind, be respectful, be responsible, and be safe. We are proud of your leading us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will do a roll call to refire the quorum tonight.
Commissioner Nordean?
Here.
Commissioner Becca?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Commissioner Vu?
We have quorum, then we can get started. Tonight, we have the public forum in which each citizen will be allowed to up to four minutes to address the board, providing that here she has additional or new information that has not been previously shared at the current meeting. The school board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor any person connected with the school system in a public forum. Our first speaker for tonight is Nathan Stremschah. Did I say it right? And Kirsten Willey.
I'm from Eau Claire Memorial.
And I'm Nathan Stremschah. I'm from Eau Claire North.
All right. We would like to start by thanking you all for your environmentally progressive promise from the meeting two weeks ago pledging to become carbon neutral school district by 2050. Speaking for myself, it's been very difficult growing up as a bystander to our country's disregard for the environment, but through the involvement in Memorial's Environmental Club, I've been able to shift the lifestyles of students, myself included, to practice and focus on sustainability. Of course, there are always things out of our control, especially throughout the school day. It's so encouraging that the school district has taken such a bold stance supporting sustainability because now, instead of very small groups trying to make a difference, we can work together as a district to normalize sustainability practices. Through the implementation of the approved resolution, sustainable energy sources will not only save money, they will inform and encourage the public. Said resolutions will provide positive role models for thousands of students enrolled in the school district annually. Students and faculty alike will be enlightened to how their decisions impact the world that we live on, only furthering the progression of our green city, Eau Claire.
And as the president of North Environmental Club, both our club and our student organizations have taken steps to increase sustainability and reduce waste within the school. While this mindset and approach is a great start, it can only go so far. The district's sustainability resolution can be a stepping stone for a more top-down approach to an environmentally healthier school district. Students and faculty across the district would love to shift to more sustainable practices, but currently lack the funding or awareness. We are deeply appreciative of the district's resolution as it provides sustainability leadership within our schools. This leadership has the power to unite the district and provide a common goal for everyone to strive for. Additionally, building a more sustainable district would help us fit into our surrounding community, as the city of Eau Claire is environmentally focused and would most likely love to see a change in one of its largest institutions. In an even wider sense, countless school districts across the country and around the world already have similar programs and resolutions, so all action on this front fulfills our ethical responsibility.
Thank you very much. Our next speakers are Estella Torgerson and Lydia Monk.
Hi, I'm Estelle Torgerson. I go to Memorial High School.
Hi, I'm Lydia Monk, and I go to North High School. Environmental sustainability is a broad term for the goals of our district. We ask the district, as leaders for the community it serves, to be open to suggestions by the people most expertly informed on the subject and collaborate with its community in the process. The resolution to be carbon neutral may be one that is complex. However, the best resources of the district are already here, sitting at their desks every day, ready to help. Students may not only benefit from, but help contribute to, the efforts of sustainability within our schools. Project-based learning is one of the most effective types of education. There exist endless possibilities for the learning projects that could be created from enhancing sustainability in our schools, from engineering best tools in physics to writing about these efforts in English class. Working towards the common goal of sustainability may also answer the common question for students, how does this relate to real life? Integrating such a resolution into curricula may increase student motivation and develop problem-solving skills while promoting a culture of environmental sustainability. It is the students and the culture they create that will follow the lead of the great work the district has already begun.
Goal-setting is the first step in making a change, and that is why we are so thankful for the goal that our school board has passed. Going carbon neutral by 2050 is an amazing long-term mission that will involve an extensive amount of teamwork, leadership, and persistence within our community. We owe it to ourselves and our future generations to take action now, be proactive instead of reactive, and truly give it our all to make this change. We need to consciously make the decision to take advantage of every opportunity that we are given in order to achieve our carbon neutral ambitions. Overall, we, as citizens of Eau Claire, have the power to change the culture and environment that our youth grow up in. Every single person in this room has an impact on this earth, and through our daily actions, we can be positive role models for our classmates, our children, and our community. It starts with you. Thank you for your vision, leadership, and commitment to sustainability.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker for the open forum is Mr. Joshua Clements.
I apologize, I'm battling a cold, so I'll do my best to get through this. My name is Joshua Clements. I live at 218 McKinley Avenue in the Third Ward. I'm a parent of students at Lake Shore and Memorial. First, I want to commend the board for approving a resolution expressing a vision regarding sustainability, energy, and carbon last month. I'm also pleased to see that there is a presentation later tonight on the deployment of solar equipment at the high schools that will be discussed a little bit later. Second, I have some comments regarding the future physical planning for the district. I serve on the district's Demographics and Trends Committee. Personally, I'm a city planner, community development practitioner, and incoming president of the Wisconsin Chapter of the American Planning Association. I'm fully immersed in studying and contemplating community change, creating and implementing plans, and aligning strategies and tactics to improve quality of life for all people. These comments are my own. I do not speak for any other person, association, or group. As reported later this meeting by Mrs. Kohler and Mr. Lyons, most elementary schools within the district are stretched for capacity. This has been the focus of the great work of the Demo and Trends Committee, of which it has been my pleasure to contribute and learn from. While the district has figures regarding current enrollment as well as long-term projections, I was alarmed when I recently learned that the district does not have a long-term physical plan. That document would ideally summarize known conditions of facilities, demographics trends, and how schools relate to their neighborhoods and the district, to the city, and region as a whole. It would be updated periodically to ensure that information is current and contemporary best practices are incorporated. It would express how the district proposes to implement its strategic priorities as applied to the location, character, and operation of facilities. This plan would provide the basis to informed decisions such as how to accommodate increased enrollment, opportunities to reduce energy consumption, and many others. This plan must be much greater than a five-year capital plan that focuses mostly on maintaining and replacing existing systems. It must describe the district's dreams and visions, reflect guiding principles in concrete ways. As you know, it takes many years to act on the need to implement major facilities improvements, typically two years from conceptual design to occupancy, add another two or more years if you need to execute a funding referendum. This is why a plan is needed. It is required that the district look out 10, 20, or years longer to evaluate what may be needed in different scenarios, consider the multiple variables to maximize desirable outcomes in each step of the way. As a committee member, I was not able to refer to some existing plan or vision as to which, when, and where schools may need to be added to. Where would we first look to expand capacity if we needed to? Where does the city anticipate growth, and how does this relate to schools? How might these changes ripple through other operations, including transportation? How can we physically and spatially achieve neighborhood-centered schools? When might we need to be replacing or completely remodeling existing buildings? There's nowhere I could look for answers. Communities are complex ecosystems. The district is justifiably focused on educating and well-being of its young people. However, as one of the most crucial components of any community, we and the district need to have regular conversations, a high awareness, and a guide as to how the district relates to the whole. We need a comprehensive assessment and vision for preparing the district and the community to ensure our community thrives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clements. And that's it for the public forum tonight. Thank you. Our next point in the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Hardbeck?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would like to first review the upcoming events for the school board. Tomorrow, there will be a ribbon cutting to celebrate the completion of the referendum work at McKinley, and that will take place at noon at McKinley. Later in the evening, there will be a family advisory council meeting, and that will be at 7:00 PM here in the administration building. And the topic of tomorrow's agenda is the superintendent's search. On November 6th at 10:00 AM, there will be a ribbon cutting to celebrate the completion of the referendum work at Prairie Ridge, and that will take place at 10:00 AM. On November 12th at 1:00 PM, we will have a budget development committee meeting, followed by a LEAP committee meeting at 4:00 PM, and both of those meetings will take place in the administration building. On November 13th, there will be another ribbon cutting for the celebration of the completion of the referendum at Locust Lane. That will take place at 8:30 AM at Locust Lane. On November 15th, there will be an Eggs and Issues presentation, and the topic of the program is about the Eau Claire Area School District, and that will be at 7:00 AM in Florin Gardens. And then on November 18th, there's a Policy and Governance meeting at 8:00 AM, and that is followed that evening by a regular school board meeting and work session, which will begin at 5:30 PM. So each year in November, this district celebrates their Veterans Day programs or activities. Some of these events will be held on the Friday before Veterans Day, and some will occur on Monday. Board members are invited to all events, and many of the events are open to the public, and we encourage you to come to those. There's a full list of those events, and that list is available on the district's website and has been shared with the school board, and I believe that individual schools have communicated with their school communities about the events that are being held at their schools. This Friday, November 8th, is National STEAM Day, and STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math. And we are fortunate to have many STEAM programs in the Eau Claire Area School District, including Project Lead the Way. We have some after-school STEAM events offered through Blue Gold Beginnings. We have a STEAM initiative at Montessori. There's the Middle School Science Fair. There are STEAM-related clubs at the various high schools. There are STEAM summer school opportunities, and many, many more teacher-led projects throughout the districts. We encourage families in the Eau Claire Area School District to take advantage of November 8th as a day to maybe experience some type of STEAM activity, have a conversation about careers that are available in the STEAM fields, or just perhaps read a book together about that subject. We've had several school fundraising for local food pantries lately. In addition to Prairie Ridge's ongoing project with their Fighting Against Hunger, North High School recently held an indoor marching band concert to benefit donations of non-perishable food items, and all of these items went to Feed My People. They raised approximately $446, plus many canned foods and dry food items. And at Mettaview Elementary, students are working to raise $453 to benefit the Feed My People Food Bank, which represents $1 for each student. Donations of non-perishable food items are also being accepted. So I think, you know, at this time of year when we are celebrating Thanksgiving and giving thanks for the blessings that we have, to be able to see our students share in that community spirit is truly a wonderful thing. And then recently, Markort Toyota donated a Chevy Malibu to North High School, along with tools and maintenance items for their auto program. And I would really like to say thank you to the Markorts. This generous donation will give the students in the North High School automotive classes an opportunity to perform hands-on vehicle maintenance and learn about the maintenance and repair of cars, and we greatly appreciate this gift and how it will support our students.
Thank you, Dr. Hardbeck. The next point in the agenda is the board president's report. I have two items to share with you tonight. The first one, we're moving forward with our superintendent's search, getting very close to finalize the job description, the profile of the future superintendent. We have completed a number of meetings to get input from teachers, staff, and community. Our last community listening session was last Saturday. We still have a few more ahead this week, including a meeting with principals and parents in the advisory committee and personnel from central office. After that, we will be making the posting of the position and initiating the formal process of receiving applications, and we'll go from there. The second item for my report tonight is that, as I announced in our last session, a vacancy has been produced in the Board of Education. Following the procedure, we have 60 days to complete, to fill in that position, and an application form for those who are interested in filling the position will be made available through the Eau Claire Area School District website on Thursday, November 7th, that is Thursday this week, which will be available until November 28th. After that, the board will have time to review those materials, and in December, we will, in an open forum, I'm sorry, in an open session, interview the candidates and proceed to voting, so we can have our new member before the end of this year, ideally early December. So this is an invitation to the community. For those who have interest and willingness to support in the roles that we have to play as board members, please consider seriously presenting the application, and we'll be very glad to read them and engage with you in conversation. That's all for my report tonight. The next point in the agenda is student representative report. Let's begin with Morgan Prem.
Hello. Excuse me. For my report this week, I'd like to start with sports. Boys soccer was able to beat Hudson 2-0 to advance to the sectional final, where they beat Appleton North 3-1, earning a trip to state, which will take place this Friday in Milwaukee. Girls cross-country took second at the sectional meet, qualifying for state. The boys' team finished fourth and had one individual state qualifier. The top seven members of the girls' team, as well as the boys' individuals' athletes, competed at state this Saturday in Wisconsin Rapids. The girls finished 13th out of 20 teams. Girls swim and dive finished fourth at conference and will be competing at sectionals this coming weekend. And volleyball, football, and tennis have concluded their seasons for this year. As Dr. Hardbeck mentioned earlier, there are plenty of food drives going around in the district. The Future Business Leaders of America Club at Memorial is hosting a food drive for the Old Abe Food Pantry throughout this week. They are accepting non-perishable food donations as well as monetary donations, and this program aids Memorial students and families who don't have a constant or reliable source of food. Parents and students can make their donations during parent-teacher conferences tomorrow night. In the arts, we have four orchestra students who were chosen to be part of the 2019, excuse me, Wisconsin State Middle and High School Orchestra. Additionally, three students performed in the 2019 Wisconsin State Honors Choir. Finally, our annual musical production is taking place this weekend. They will be showing Shrek. Showings will be Friday through Sunday. It's free for all Eau Claire Area School District students, and any proceeds will go directly to the Memorial High School Theater Program. Thank you.
And now we have Joni Shong.
Well, I would like to start off with sports as well, and my only sports report that I can give is that our girls' volleyball team is going to be taking on Wausau West tonight, which I just found out, and it'll be at 7:00 PM, and it'll be at New Richmond, and it is going to be a very interesting game because our volleyball, our girls' volleyball team is very, very good. So, um, for music, also today at 7:00 PM is the Jazz Band Concert, and the Jazz Band students have been practicing a lot, and they are amazing at what they do, and I really wish we were all there right now, so. Another thing that's actually coming up is like what Dr. Hardbeck has said about Veterans Day, is that our Veterans Day ceremony is going to be on the coming Friday, November 8th at 10:00 AM in the Doghouse. That'll be our biggest gym, the only big gym that we have. I'd love to invite the school board members and anyone else here that's not NHS-related, and I would like you all to see how North High School respects our veterans and how we honor their existence. And this is something really interesting I found, and I really, really, really want to share this. This is a topic that I found on our school website, and North High School has this thing called the Weekly News, and this was about a fellow alumni who was a graduate in 2001 and did this fundraiser and sold these drinks called Husky Tees, and she has sold up to 100 of them, and that was in three days, and I find that very awesome, and I really want to try one. Um, she has, what was this? Wow. She's raised up a lot. I can't really say the number, but she's donated $100 to North High School last week, and I am just at an awe that an adult that was a former student at North High School would still care for her school, and I'm impressed that she still sees North as her second home. And also what Dr. Hardbeck has said was with Markort, and that they donated a vehicle plus a lot of tools, so thank you, Dr. Hardbeck, for doing half of my report for me. And so with that, I am just at an awe that our school still has like stuff like that happening, and I'm really proud to be at North, and it's not as exciting or extravagant as that, but yeah, that's all for me.
Thank you very much. Joni and Morgan, we are pretty, we are very proud of you too. The next point in the agenda is school board committee reports. So let's get started with budget. Commissioner Harder?
Thanks. Good evening. We didn't actually meet budget since our last meeting, but what we did have, as you recall, last week, was a session where the full board approved our school budget, which I'm happy to reiterate for everybody's benefit, is not only balanced but has a surplus for the first time in several years. And so thanks again for our executive team and to our entire district staff for helping us achieve that outcome. We will be meeting again in the budget committee Tuesday, November 12th at 1:00 PM.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Harder. Our next report would be Demo and Trends.
Demo and Trends has not met since our last session either, but of course is providing a report tonight, and will be asking the board for direction going forward.
Thank you. Policy and Governance, that will be my part. We met earlier today, and we approved a proposal to, for Policy 454, identifying and reporting child abuse, neglect, trafficking. Is ready for the full board consideration, so will be in the agenda next, not in our next session, but the first one in December. That's all for PNG. A report from the LEAP committee.
Thank you. We have not met since our last meeting, but we have a meeting coming up on the 12th.
Thank you very much. Now we have, do we have a report, a legislative update? Dr. Nordean?
Yes, in a previous update, I mentioned Assembly Bill 422, which would raise the legal age to purchase and possess tobacco and nicotine and cigarette products from 18 to 21. It would set the age of purchase and possession of vapor products at 21. So that would, you know, raise, yes, it would set it to 21 for both, for basically all kinds of nicotine products. On Wednesday this week, the Assembly Committee on Substance Abuse and Prevention will be holding a public hearing regarding this bill. The hearing will be at 10:00 AM in the North Hearing Room at the Capitol Building in Madison. So if you are able to be in Madison at that time and would like to testify on this, we are aware that across the state, and that vaping especially, has increased at an alarming rate among school-aged youth. Certainly, this bill has the potential to help to decrease that just by making it more difficult to come across those products. The bill is supported by a long list of organizations, including the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. So as ever, please contact your assembly members, especially but all your legislators, to encourage them to support this bill moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nordean. Our next point in the agenda is the consent resolution. We will consider approval of the consent resolution items. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. This will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. The consent agenda, the consent resolution agenda includes minutes of October 21st, 2019, minutes of closed session, October 21st, 2019, minutes of budget hearing, October 28th, 2019, human resources employment report, resolution authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed $7 million, delegate authority to the executive director of business, services to request cash advances on the line of credit at Merchants Bank through June 30th, 2020, an RFP for architectural design services for Roosevelt Secure Engrants, and finally, transportation contract. and finally, transportation contract. Does anyone want to pull any item? I have a question about the transportation contract, so I'll, I'll pull that out. So, uh, we will need a, uh, motion to approve, uh, the consent agenda points one, I'm sorry, seven point two through seven point eight.
So moved?
Uh, motion to approve the consent agenda by, uh, Dr. Nordean. And a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harder. Those who approve, please say aye. Aye, I'm sorry, we need to do a roll call. Uh, we have a budget item.
Commissioner Nordean?
Yes.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes. The consent agenda has been approved. Transportation contract. My question is, uh, did we get to include some language to, uh, express our desire with, uh, student transporta- student transportation to, uh, modify, uh, their fleet to more friendly, environmentally friendly units?
So Abby Johnson could not be with us tonight because she's ill, but we do have Jim Frye in the audience and I think he would come up and talk a little bit about what their discussion, um, was about in terms of green buses.
Good evening. Um, yes, we spoke and Abby felt like at this point with, uh, because we're a private company and how we should approach putting that in, that language in, we were gonna, we, I sent her some language. But we were trying to figure out how to best put that in the contract. And it was basically, it was, um, language that, you know, said we'll continue to, uh, present, uh, look for environmentally, uh, be good stewards of the environment and to continually work towards, uh, clean energy, green energy, uh, renewable energy, uh, for that matter. But, um, it was just a, she, we just had a concern about how, being a private company, how that would work with, you know, because we still have to be able to, um, operate. And so we didn't wanna paint ourselves into a corner. But, um, know that we are always looking at the, those sorts of, uh, environmentally friendly, uh, resources to transport our, our students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, uh, uh, we would, uh, outline, uh, a motion to approve the transportation contract?
I'll make a motion.
Motion presented by Commissioner Klinkammer and a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Nordean. So those who, um, well, this is another budget item, so we need to do a roll call.
Commissioner Nordean?
Yes.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes, thank you. We have approved the transportation contract. Thank you, Ms. Frye. At this point, we will adjourn to committee. And during, uh, this time, we will receive some reports. And then we'll ask questions. They will respond to questions if there are any, including from the floor. The first, uh, report will be solar panels for Memorial and North High Schools.
Hello, uh, my name is Hannah Trwilliger. I am a two thousand and nine graduate of Eau Claire Memorial High School. Before that, I was at DeLong Middle School in Lake Shore and my kindergarten teacher is even here, Mrs. White. So that's, that's fun. So I'm going to talk a bit about solar on Eau Claire schools. Do I, oh, I can, there we go. Alright, so, um, solar is not a future technology. It's being deployed at a massive scale today. I work in energy policy in Minnesota and in Minnesota, we're seeing that solar is now a least cost resource. Um, this is my house, I have solar on it that I put on two years ago. Um, and so far, it's been a good investment for me personally, uh, and it's been able to power most of my house. Uh, so as you probably know, Eau Claire and the Eau Claire Area School District have some, uh, goals to have a hundred percent renewable and carbon-free energy by twenty fifty. And the city of Eau Claire is a soul smart, um, gold community, so that means that they've got really good standards in place to help encourage solar energy adoption. So solar on schools is an initiative of the Colliard Solar Foundation and their goal is to expand solar access to public schools throughout Wisconsin. And that includes, uh, Eau Claire Memorial and Eau Claire North as some of the first, uh, schools for that project. Uh, and so they'd like to install solar on a hundred schools across the state of Wisconsin and at a hundred kilowatts each, if that's around the amount, that would be ten megawatts. Um, and that's a pretty significant amount of solar over the next few, um, three to four years. So the great thing about this is there is no cost to the Eau Claire Area School District. The panels are funded through donations from the Colliard Solar Foundation and then the, uh, Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation will work to fundraise the rest of the installation costs, um, any other project costs, uh, that, so there will be no cost to the school at all. So that'll save a lot of money for the school district and, uh, provide some significant benefits that I'll talk about in a minute. So we've got the Colliard Solar Foundation, the Eau Claire Public School Foundation, we have licensed electrical contractors and solar installers, a fundraising market committee, and then Eau Claire Solar Advocates. And I, uh, would guess that we've got some students who are very supportive of the efforts as well. I think you probably heard some of them speak earlier tonight. So a few specifications, uh, there will be a hundred and twenty-one point seven kilowatts DC, so an AC, which is what the grid operates in, that would be a hundred kilowatt arrays. Uh, and this is going to be around ten thousand dollars of energy savings per school for a year. Uh, in working in the regulatory sector, I can tell you that in Minnesota, Exile Energy has just proposed a fifteen percent rate increase. So what you're doing when you're putting solar on the school is you're locking in your energy rates for the next twenty years. And so that's, as energy rates continue to increase, which they're going to do into the future, you're really saving that money that you can use to put towards something else. You could use it for better insulation, for, uh, more resources for students. So that's just funding that you have and in times of, I'm sure, declining school revenues, it's really important to have that flexibility. Uh, there will be a hundred and fifty-six modules donated per school and then an additional hundred and fifty-six panels if that matching grant is met. So that's a really great opportunity for both of the high schools in Eau Claire. It's also the, the learning opportunity is great. So this, you can see, you can put up, um, educational displays that show the current output of the system. I went to the University of Minnesota for my graduate degree and they had displays like this that showed energy used throughout all the buildings and showed what on-campus solar arrays are doing. And it's a cool tool to get students more engaged with, um, their, the energy that the school is producing. And so then there's a lot of tie-ins to curriculum, science, math, um, like I mentioned, the online monitoring. Um, and then I think it's a really great opportunity to talk to students about potential future job opportunities. I work, like I said, in the energy regulatory sector, but across the country, things like solar and wind installation jobs are some of the fastest-growing jobs in the country. These are good-paying jobs that can support families. Um, so I think just having the solar up there and then even thinking about all the different ways the energy impacts us, it really exposes students to a whole range of job opportunities and in a sector they might not have traditionally thought of. I know when I was in school, I wasn't thinking about going into the energy sector. Um, so I think it would have been really cool for me to have that kind of exposure when I was at, um, the Eau Claire, at Memorial and even in elementary school. So this is where, uh, mock-up of the Memorial High School array. There have been a full engineering studies done for both Memorial and North. And as they've got some pretty large, flat roofs with not a lot of trees around them, as you would expect, they are great opportunities and great sites to put solar arrays up. Um, so there's the North Array as well. So these are both pretty optimal sites, especially large, flat roofs. Um, and I know we've got some folks here who have worked on the engineering reports. So if you have more technical questions, I'm sure they'll be available as well. And then finally, um, as the students mentioned, the Eau Claire Area School District has some, uh, carbon reduction goals and so this could really help to meet that. The great thing about Wisconsin is you get to keep what are called the renewable energy credits, so you can claim all of the environmental benefits that the solar is producing towards the school's, um, carbon neutrality goals. And so that's an even better, um, tool as the school is working to, um, become more sustainable. You can, um, make the claims, uh, that you've offset carbon, you've offset other sorts of, uh, emissions reductions that are harmful to the environment. So, uh, I will leave it there and I can answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Klinkammer?
Thank you for the presentation, that was great. One of the things you've said is, uh, the, there's this grant that's donating a hundred and fifty-six modules per school, but there's a way to get a hundred and fifty-six additional modules if you have a matching grant. Can you expand on that a little bit for me?
I might call in some assistance from some of the other folks who have been working on it a little bit more, but my understanding is that, um, if, as long as you can, um, do the fundraising to pay for all the installation costs, then you get the whole, um, the whole shebang. So it, it's, it's pretty much, as long as you can meet that and there's, it sounds like there's already been a lot of good fundraising, uh, outreach, not official fundraising, but there, you know, there's a lot of interest from the community in helping support this since it's such a great opportunity for the school from an educational, from a financial, and from a, um, sustainability perspective.
What would be the role, uh, of the foundation in the fundraising effort?
I will let the foundation talk about that.
Yeah, the role of the foundation is to help the fundraising committee with the donations and support that they may need to help facilitate it. We, um, took a minute and drafted a brochure that, um, could be used by the committee and they're expanding their committee right now for donations. And I thought you might wanna take a look at it, I'll kinda give you an idea of what the foundation can do. And maybe if you wanna just pass some down. This is in draft form, please, um, so just note that, but it's something we were able to pull together, um, for you so that we can help support the funding, fundraising committee in their work. We'll be able to answer any questions that donors may have when, um, asked. We can help with any stock trades that come through. We can help, help with any IRA distributions that might come in. And, um, actually, we're gonna have, uh, actually work with a press release and some other pieces if this is approved by the board.
Am I understanding that the work will not start until the funding is complete?
That is correct. You can't spend any money till the money's in.
I have a question and I don't know, I don't know if it's for the foundation or for the, uh, the solar panel people. Who is, first, uh, is there, we don't, we don't have, um, practice on providing maintenance to solar panels. So, um, will there be training available so district employees can perform maintenance on the solar panels?
I'll let Zeus speak to that.
Okay.
Hello. My name is Zeus Stark, I'm with Next Step Energy and part of the group that's putting, bringing forth this, um, proposal. The idea behind it was to fundraise enough money to allow a twenty-five-year maintenance agreement so that it wouldn't cost the school district anything. But we would train as part of the installation, we would train whoever is necessary to train so that...
Thank you, that is very generous. So there will be training for?
Yes.
People. And perhaps, uh, the next question is also for you. Well, no, actually, you're a respondent, so you said twenty-five years of maintenance, right?
Yeah, that's, that is the goal, yes.
Okay, and you said for free?
It would be part of the fundraising, so it...
So the, the funds will be generated?
The funds will be generated so that this will cost the district, it won't cost the district anything through that twenty-five-year lifespan of the system. And it, it, it should have a longer lifespan than twenty-five years, but the, yes.
Thank you. Are there, are, are there any other questions from the board? Yes, Commissioner Harder and Dr. Nordean.
So the brochure says the total project cost is about four hundred thousand. Is that, that's including the, some, those maintenance costs that you...
Right, yes. And, and the, the solar panels that are donated are part, included in that.
Right, and it, that's, uh, the hundred and fifty-six panels are, are part of that four hundred thousand, isn't it?
Actually, the, the entire, I think it's, uh, six hundred, right?
Right, so the, okay, got you.
Three hundred and twelve, yeah.
But the, the hundred and fifty-six are already sort of secured in a sense.
Right.
And then we'll be aiming for the other hundred and fifty-six through additional fundraising. And what, what is the dollar figure on the remaining one fifty-six that's not secured? Do we know?
I, that hasn't, that hasn't fully been, um, figured yet.
Sure, okay.
So that, yeah, I think there's...
There was not too much to worry about if we're gonna fundraise any more.
Yeah, okay. So it seems like achievable?
Yes.
An achievable number?
I think there's a huge backing, I just talked about it, I was at another event earlier tonight and I just kinda mentioned it and solar is, uh, it feels a little, a lot of positive feedback when you say the word solar.
People excited about solar, yeah, understandably.
I love maybe saving some items, I mean, we donate to this, I'm like, I'll donate. And, and mind you, this is a draft, I mean, literally, we pulled this together just so we can at least give you an example of what the foundation would do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Nordean?
Sure, um, so I have solar panels on my house and they were installed by Next Step Energy. So just to have that out front, I'm very happy with them. But this is the first that I, until we got this report, so I'm not involved in this project anyway. I have a little bit of a question. So the total cost for the project, four hundred thousand dollars, and we were projected to save twenty thousand dollars a year. When we did our house, our return on investment was between twelve and thirteen years, we thought. And if I look at this, the return on the community's investment is about twenty years. And I'm just curious as to why it might be, this is a larger project, I would think, and we are having three hundred and some of the solar panels donated, I'm just wondering why the cost, and maybe that's a breakdown with the maintenance. But I'm just wondering why there's the longer turnaround for the community. It's, I will donate, I'm excited to donate for this, but I would like to know, you know, are we getting the best value that we can?
There, there's four things that come into it. One is you get a tax credit of thirty percent, you get a Spokis incentive that was a larger percentage because it was a smaller system. There, there's also the fact that you're getting a net retail rate back on yours. There's, um, a rate of about seven cents per kilowatt that the school pays. And then there's a peak power demand rate that's, demand charges that are played, come into play. So you're actually, your system was getting about five cents a kilowatt more for what it produces.
So just to, just for me to be clear, the, the, the two big differences are there's a different tax rebate incentive for the, the larger system in a sense, and the school pays a different rate for the electricity?
There, there's no tax incentive for the school.
Great, well, not great, but...
Right, the thirty percent, the, the tax incentive is not, you know, not, not taken into the, you know, calculation of the payback. The, the, and the rates almost, you know, it's sixty percent of the rate that you're getting
Great.
for what it's produced, so it...
Thank you, I, I think this is a very exciting project, I just wanted to make sure I knew exactly how the numbers were broken down.
Uh, out of ignorance, oh, uh, Dr. Becca. Out of ignorance, um, what's the life of a solar panel?
Well, a solar panel has a, you know, it has a output warranty of twenty to twenty-five years. It has a, uh, workmanship warranty between twelve and twenty years. And we've got panels that were put in in the eighties that are still functioning. So it's almost, you know, thirty, thirty-five years, thirty, thirty-five years. So the, the technology's changed since then and, but, but the expected lifespan for the warranty is over twenty-five years, so.
Thank you.
It's, it could, it could be, it could be... It could, it could be, it could be upwards of 40 years for a panel, but in 40 years, I have, have this feeling that the technologies will be quite a bit different than they are now.
Dr. Beekah?
Thank you for creating this opportunity for us to be part of a, of a pilot program to lead in the area. I was wondering if your group had talked about what would be the viability of, of the middle schools? And how might you structure a fundraising campaign that could catch the middle schools if there is a lot of momentum?
I, I probably can't speak specifically to programs here in Wisconsin, but where I work in Minnesota, there's been a big effort on the part of the state to do a solar for schools. And just in the work that I do, I see a lot of the, the reporting come in about who's installing solar. And so there's a lot of school districts that are just doing it without even fundraising campaigns. They're doing it on their own, on their own motion, just because it does make financial sense for them. And so I'm, I'm not as familiar with the, how like all the different tariff structures and everything work in Wisconsin, but in Minnesota, a lot of schools see this as a really great opportunity. And so I, I would guess that all the middle schools and even the elementary schools also have pretty nice, flat, shadeless roofs that could be really optimal to put solar on, and especially if you're starting to do those larger economies of scale, if you've got different groups going together, you could see a really great opportunity. And I think from an educational perspective, even for, I, when I, I was in AmeriCorps Vista in Eau Claire, and I worked with the youth eco teams at Lakeshore Elementary, and it's amazing how much third graders knew about like how the energy systems work. You'd ask them about the different ways that you could generate electricity, and, you know, they'd be saying, "Well, the sun, but eventually it'll like go into a supernova and then it won't produce the electricity anymore." So I think it's really, it's really cool to see how engaged even from a really young age kids are. So I think having that proposition there makes it really attractive to the community to help do that. And of course, the financial benefits. I think if you think about solar, it's not, it's not just an expense, it's an investment. It's like, when you buy a car, it starts to lose value right away. But your solar, when you put that on your roof, it starts to pay you back right away. And so that's where I think a really great opportunity comes in.
Any other questions from board members? Questions from the public? Yes, sir? Could you please come to the mic and say your name and your address?
Shannon Minch, W-5065, State Road, Mondovi, Wisconsin. I was a teacher in the district. No issues with the, the program. My question is, we just spent a ton of money on all these roofs, and they're about a 25-year warranty. How are these fastened down? And then the second question I have is, Excel Energy and Dairyland Co-op out on 12 had built a solar field, so it's purely on the ground, not on a roof? Were those other, other options considered, I guess? Thank you.
Thank you.
So the solar array is a ballasted roof system, so it has trays, and the roof, roof membrane is set on top of the roof membrane, or not membrane is, trays are set on top of that membrane, and then ballasted with block. And that, that doesn't, there's no penetrations into either roof from the system. And then second, second question was...
Solar exit?
Oh, whether, I, I think there's accessibility, it's something that could be pursued if it's, if it's, if it's something that is seen, that it could be pursued to do a ground mount. The ground mount tends to cost more than a roof mount, and then you have accessibility to students, but it's, it is something that if it's, if it's wanted, if, if it's, if you guys want to look into that, we can look into that as well.
You also need to have land on site at the school typically. You can't, in Wisconsin and at least in Minnesota as well, you can't put your, under most programs, you can't just put the solar somewhere else. It needs to be where you're consuming the electricity.
It would need to be in the school grounds, yes.
But if you were in a rural school district that had a lot of open space around it, somewhere like Mondovi for example, there could be a better opportunity to do it there. But of course, it would depend on your local utilities, rules around solar as well.
Any other question from the public? Here in none, we're gonna thank our presenters tonight. We're very excited about this project, and we will get back to you. Our next point in the agenda is Acres of Joy, SLS S.I.P.
My name is Paul Lern. I'm the principal at South Middle School. Along with me is Jeff Jackson from Acres of Joy, and Crystal Razika from our success coach at South Middle School. So tonight, we have the privilege of talking about the successful collaboration between South Middle School and Acres for Joy. As we always do, we take a look at how our programs fit in with the, the board's strategic plan. And you can see highlighted on this, this slide, that this program meets all five of your, your goals. It also fits in with our South Middle School strategic, or a school improvement plan, which one of our points from one of our four goals is 80% of our students will be in good academic standing with no Ds or Fs. And SLS attendance rate will be at or above 95%. So the South Middle School SIP team looked at some innovative ways that we, educational strategies that we could use to accomplish these goals over the last couple of years. So we take a look at what students are we looking at? These are students that do not have an IEP, meaning that they're not in the special education program, but they're in that area where there isn't help for them presently. This is a program that also looks at students who are at risk emotionally, academically, and/or behaviorally. We're looking at trying to close our achievement gap, which is something that the board has been talking about since the few months that I've been here, and I think you've been talking about it longer than that. But the big thing is we're looking at success for all students, all students at South Middle School, and we hope all students here in the Eau Claire School District. Next up is Crystal.
So the main question that comes up when we talk about the ranch programming as part of this program at South Middle School is why horses? Why does it need to be horses? So we're actually gonna take a look at some cognitive neurology and cognitive neuropsychology for a moment. So what you're looking at in that first picture is the hierarchy of the brain, and the brain actually develops from the bottom to the top and inside out. So develops from the brainstem up into the midbrain diencephalon, and then the limbic system, and then the neocortex. And it also develops sequentially, so each part develops at a different time, from in neuro all the way to 30 years old. Positive or negative experiences that we have that occur during critical parts of our development can alter an area of the brain. And because there's a cascade effect, if one of those areas of the brain is altered, it can have an impact on the other areas of the brain as well. So the brain also develops through sensory input and use and association. So the more a part of the brain is used, the more it's muscled up, so that's where that second picture comes in. Trauma or stress results in increased local connections and decreased cross-brain connections. So the brain actually adapts to accommodate the environment in which it's living. So if it's primarily needed for survival, then that's the part of the brain that's gonna have the most muscled up use. Self-regulation, something that as educators, we are consistently teaching and hoping for from our students, is only possible when the outer regions of the brain are able to override what's happening in the lower regions of the brain. So it actually takes 12 one-hundredths of a second for our lower brain to respond, and it takes 22 one-hundredths of a second for the upper regions of our brain to respond. So if you're thinking of a horse out in a field, and a bag floats past the horse, in 12 one-hundredths of a second, the sight and sound of that bag actually activates a state of alarm in the horse. Hormones are released in the limbic system, and then the horse prepares for fight or flight. But it actually depends on the horse's experience. So one of two things can happen. If the horse has an underdeveloped pathway to the neocortex, then the limbic and diencephalon regions are muscled up, and they win. The horse flees or the horse fights. However, if the horse has pathways to the neocortex, in the 22 one-hundredths of a second, the neocortex responds, tells the horse that there is no threat, sends a signal to the lower areas of the brain, and the horse calms down. So our relationship with horses is actually aimed at reorganizing their brain and helping them to form those pathways to their neocortex. And the way that we do that is by offering horses choice. So by working with horses, we're actually creating a bridge for our students to do this as well. So we give horses choice all the time. We learn together that there's a big difference between cooperation and compliance. Compliance exists when there is limited or no choice. Many of our students who have at-risk factors give compliance, but not cooperation. That actually is not success. Cooperation exists when both participants have choice. Choices about behavior always exist in the neocortex. So by working with the horses, the students are practicing being in a relationship where they learn to ask for what they need, and they respect others' freedom to respond rather than react. They practice giving and receiving choice. Are they going to ignore? Are they going to resist? Or are they going to cooperate? When these three choices are given in a safe environment, cross-brain connections form, and self-regulation then becomes possible. Students also learn that horses can sense their mood. We learn to listen to our bodies to determine what can the horse feel from us. They also learn that the horse responds to how we are in that very moment, and they have a long memory. When we think about working with therapy dogs, which is also an excellent thing for our students, thing about dogs is they, they forget quickly. They just love. Horses have a long memory, so the students are taught very early in the program that they need to really be conscious of what is their body giving off so that the horses, what is the horse learning from them, from their body? The horse can actually feel our heartbeats, and studies have shown that if the horse is calm, the electromagnetic field from the horse's heart has a tendency to calm the human brain, which reduces our heart rate, and then the calmer that we become, the calmer the horses. In order to achieve that, however, the students must learn to let go of any negative thoughts or feelings in their bodies. For many, this is the first time that they have the explicit opportunity to learn how to do this. The horse and the student learn how to breathe together, and their hearts begin to regulate together. And together, the horse and the students create a new neural pathway of safety and calm. This gives students an opportunity to have a genuine relationship, and to examine themselves and what, how their relationships are in the community, in their school, and in their home. So as we, knowing this, Diana Zieger's former principal of South, who is joining us on live stream as we speak, reached out to Jeff Jackson of Acres for Joy, and we're gonna turn the next moment over to them, over to him.
Well, good evening, and thank you for the invitation and the opportunity. The last time I was in this, or I'm, I'm Jeff Jackson, an Eau Claire native. The last time I was in this building, I was completing eighth grade. And from there, I, I went to DeLonge for its first year that it was open. I then went on to North High School and graduated in 1976. Shortly thereafter, a combination of, of youth energy and yet-developing judgment set the stage for me to make some, some poor choices. Poor choices that had very significant consequences, and that was quite formative at, at that time and since then. That involved what was supposed to be a short trip to Nebraska, which ended up being extensively delayed. But while there, and as I was working through those lessons and reevaluating my choices, I soon became involved with, at the University of Nebraska Medical Center and went through their registered nurse program. I then went on to the physician assistant program and completed that in 1986. I returned back to Eau Claire in 1990, and I've been a physician assistant for the last 33 years. I've worked in a variety of settings with the university residency program for 11 years, Marshville Clinic. I've been with Sacred Heart Hospital for the last 24 years, involved in their behavioral health clinic. I am a behavioral health specialist in, in my, my role is, I'm a full-time provider of behavioral health care, and so I'm involved with a gamut of, of conditions that, that present. My involvement in Sacred Heart, and, and not to belabor this, but it, it all, it all weaves together and, and plays in. My role at Sacred Heart is that I end up in contact with probably 80% of the new admissions to the behavioral health unit for the last 20, well, 80%, not always for 24 years, but for the last six or eight years. And so I am, and I, I see them within the first 24 hours of their admission, so I'm always in the context of very often crisis. Crisis that leads to hospitalization, and specifically, I would say, on the adolescent unit as well. So year after year after year, I'm involved with the evaluation of the conditions that present to an inpatient adolescent psychiatric unit. Additionally, I'm, it's my privilege to be the medical provider at the Eau Claire Academy for the last 16 years. So there's a brief introduction to me, which, which isn't at really the heart of what gets me to this microphone. I'd next like to introduce you to Acres for Joy, and by way of that, I'd like to introduce you to Abigail Joy Jackson, my, our second of four daughters. And Abby grew up in the Eau Claire Area School District. Full of life, full of energy, fun, lover of children, lover of animals. At the age of nine, Abby developed type 1 diabetes, and by the age of 14, she had developed an eating disorder. And that combination is, that combination led to, to multiple hospitalizations, and eventually to our family being in a, a time of crisis. And it was in that context that I heard Kim Meader speak on the radio while I was driving to work about Crystal Peaks Youth Ranch in Bend, Oregon. 9.7 acres, 4,500 visits a year with children, connecting them with horses. And it, it caught my attention, I, you know, it was an interesting thought. Shortly thereafter, Abby was hospitalized at the Bermuda Ranch in Wickenburg, Arizona, an eating disorder program, equine-centered eating disorder program. And while there, at a distance closer than, than this, I heard the founder talk about horses and their effect in kids, their effect in help being used in that therapeutic setting. And that was the second time that that had come into my, my realm, and it was, it was while Abby was there, she was there 134 days. It was during her first stay that when visiting, she said, she said to me, "Papa, could I get a horse?" And I said, "Abby, a horse?" She said, "Please, Papa." I said, "Abby, I don't know anything about horses. Please." I said, "Well, let, let me just think about that." I will tell you, in many things, context is everything, and, and certainly that was the case there. Multiple hospitalizations, ICU stays, brush with death, and now we're down in a program. And, and Abby, who has increasingly been drawn back, is drawn out in the context of, of horses. And, and as she continued to struggle and came home, the time came that I, I typed up two paragraphs. "We're Jeff and Margaret Jackson, we live in the city, we'd like to move to the country." We're Jeff and Margaret Jackson, we live in the city, we'd like to move to the country. I'm looking for five acres, we want to get a horse. And I went south to Eau Claire, and on the eighth door, cold calling, door-to-door, and on the eighth door, I found twenty-nine acres, and two weeks later, purchased a vacant field. A vacant field, except for a thousand gophers and their moms. And set, and away we go, and we're, as we began to build, the day we dug the hole, Abby was in the ICU at Sacred Heart Hospital. And she came through that state, and Eau Claire County placed her at Winnebago State Psychiatric Hospital, where she stayed for ten months, during which time we built and dreamed, and read horses for dummies. And Abby, what kind of horse do you want? Papa, I want a Clydesdale. A Clydesdale. So we moved in in May of '05 to our home, and Abby came home in July. And she had gone to North Star, she'd gone to Locust Lane, North Star North. But with her return home, she was beginning her senior year. She went her first day to Memorial of her senior year. And less than two weeks later, she passed away, September eleventh of 2005, of a horrible infection associated with a diminished immune system connected with diabetes. And here we were, in a vacant field, well, how could I explain that? Other than to say this, that in the years that followed, in the sorrow, the confusion, the uncertainty, the hope steadily developed the resolve. You see, those acres were originally purchased with an intention. They were purchased with an intention to bring joy. Acres for joy. That was the intention. And as we navigated through that, I personally would not abandon that original intent. Disagree with the context with all my heart, but my resolve then was to continue to pursue and to use this property as best we could for betterment. Remember the combination here. The combination of a behavioral health specialist who's often in the room with need. And while there's not lots of people with type-one diabetes and an eating disorder, there are, we are surrounded, we are surrounded. I mean, the number of, well, as you know, as you know. And so little by little, you know, fence post by fence post, by water, by barn, we finally bought a horse, then we had two horses, and we just kept making our way. And pretty soon, we've got a little cluster of horse, we're developing a ranch, and others who know us, and five years ago, a number of us banded together with the desire to become, well, I guess I should come back to the slide. So this is Ms. Abby. We purchased twenty-nine acres, and since then have added, well, added twenty-one more because I had this vision, not a real vision, but I had this sense that this thing was going to grow and we were going to serve youth in the Chippewa Valley and beyond. So we've got fifty acres out there right now, and there's about ten horses. We got goats and ducks and chickens. Three years ago, we built a covered arena, because you can't, you can't schedule to host kids if you can't account for the weather. Sixty-two by a hundred and twenty feet covered arena with a clubhouse, sixteen hundred square feet clubhouse with a kitchen and two bathrooms. And then just recently, the Kiwanis of Eau Claire Club invited me to speak and to present some slides. And after that, they said, we'd like to come out and see the place. And after that, they said, we'd like to donate thirty-one thousand dollars. Three thousand for a scholarship, three thousand for a wagon, and twenty-five thousand dollars to help you get an enclosed space so that you can serve kids throughout the year. And we are hard after that, having poured cement two weeks ago. Five oh one C three developed in 2015. Next slide. Our mission, to provide a safe and respectful equine environment that enriches relationships, builds character, and fosters joy. Our intent with kids on the property is not, like, we don't get into their, the details of their struggle, right? That's not our intent. Our intent is to encourage them, engage them, equip them, and empower them. I love, I love all of those, but I love engagement, that connecting with them. And our board of directors, you can see the list of our current board of directors. Mark Giddion, Dr. Giddenson has been with us. Dr. Giddenson was in the van, and his wife, Dr. Jennifer Eddy, was in the van when we went across that vacant field with a thousand gopher moms. And I believe that that's my part. Thank you.
So I remember when Diana Ziegler came back to school, and she told me that she'd had a three-hour, thirty-minute conversation with Jeff out at the ranch, and she said that she had found a kindred spirit in him. And so knowing that we had students who are at risk, who needed services, seeing Jeff's passion and his ability and willingness to want to serve, she actually created the Ignite Program. And the Ignite Program is a summer school program that began in 2016. Students went out to the ranch with both Stephanie Rowe, who's a seventh-grade health teacher at South, and myself to, for eight half-days and a forty-eight-hour camping trip at Governor Dodge State Park, which, there's a lot of stories there. Students were chosen for the program based on at-risk behaviors and teacher recommendations. So we looked at office discipline referral data, guidance counselor recommendations, attendance data, and our DNF data to determine which students that we have in the building at that time that had the least likelihood of graduating high school if their trajectory remained the same. We saw in the program immediate success. When we came back and the school year began, so that was the end of their sixth and seventh grade year, students had built this relationship with both Stephanie and myself, and they sought us out. So students who before didn't want anything to do with teachers were now seeking us out and wanting to share what they had done over their summer. We saw that teachers were reporting who'd had them the year before that, oh, I just can tell there's just a light inside them, that's shining. And so, but what we noticed over the course of the year was that the students actually, the students who were eighth graders, who didn't have the connection with us, their interest in the program began to wane. And if you look at here with the Ignite Program, the curriculum actually is built around relationship. And Jeff's going to speak to that for just a moment, and then we'll talk about how it actually transitioned then to our annual program.
This actually is a photograph from the original Ignite Program. This was, this was on the blackboard. And so envision this, you have these eight kids coming out, coming out to ranch, rolling out of cars and vans, and what am I doing here? And, you know, summer school is not necessarily immediately engaging. And, but this was, you know, we explained to them that the reason we're here is because we want you to succeed. We want your dreams to come true. We want you to accomplish. And that, that we believe that, that we can take the ordinary and help it become extraordinary. And you're going to hear about a little bit of how we do that a little later on. But that's, that's the heart of our time with them, is to engage with them and to say, we believe in you. In fact, you're in this summer school program because you've been chosen, because we see within you the potential to succeed and the potential to lead. And, and we know that you're going to get reading, writing, and arithmetic in multiple places, but here at the ranch in this summer school program, we want to talk about relationship skills, we want to talk about attitude, and we want to, we want to, we want to show you the door of opportunity, which is a door we have hanging on the wall. And behind that door is a collage, a star of dream, and the door of opportunity swings on two hinges. It swings on the hinge of attitude, and it swings on the hinge of relationship skills. Because your attitude, right, your attitude affects what your opportunities are. And your relationship skills, your character, and your dependability, and your ability to give, give respect, and to be honest and be dependable, all those things tie in for those, for that door of opportunity to open for you. We talk about choices and consequences. I absolutely love this one, because the question is, what is a consequence? And, and the students, and we all know, a consequence is the outcome of a choice. Is it good or bad? And if you're from the Eau Claire Academy, three out of the four that I asked in that group said it's bad. And then we get an opportunity, because it, but the Ignite kids, we know differently. A consequence actually could be a goal. The goal, I want to graduate from seventh grade. That's my goal. That's the consequence I want. Well, then what are the choices that need to be made to bring that goal, that accomplishment, about? And then we talk about boundaries and barriers. So there's just a hint of what our curriculum is.
So these are pictures from our first Ignite summer school program, and actually, we have a graduate of that program in the audience with us. We're going to be talking about Arianna in just a little bit. So as I was saying, what, we, so we had this, this, all these great lessons on relationship, and we were struggling with how do we keep our eighth graders connected. The seventh graders got to see us, I was a seventh-grade English teacher at the time, Ms. Rowe was their health teacher, they got to see us, but the eighth graders, so we thought, well, let's bring them out to the ranch once a month. So we went out once a month, the eighth graders kind of fell to the wayside. And so at this point, we decided, okay, we need something more. The success that we're seeing here is so enormous that it's worth investing in, in a bigger way.
So Diana had a vision. She had the vision that we needed to figure out how to make this work within the existing budget. So Diana presented this idea to the school improvement plan team, presented, I think Crystal explained to me that she presented two options. There was option A, which had the staffing listed at a certain level with X number of students. Option B was to have a success coach, but then the class sizes would be slightly higher because we would need to work within the budget that we had, knowing that the district budget was in the state that it was at the time. Overwhelmingly, the SIP team approved continuing having a success coach and keeping this program going because they saw what the advantages were that they saw from the Ignite Program, and they wanted that to be brought into the school year. So during that time, Diana and the SIP team worked, they worked with Jim, with the Title Four funds that we could use to pay the access fees for Acres for Joy. We use a school van versus the transportation because that is a much cheaper avenue to transport the students out there. Crystal certified to drive those students out there in the van. This year, she's taking out two separate groups every Wednesday. She's been able to expand it to two groups, so we're able to have more students involved in the program. So you might ask, on the next slide, the success coach, how did Diana decide on Crystal? Well, Diana saw that Crystal had been working with the Ignite Program. She saw that those students, or that she knew that Crystal was able to work with students who are academically and behaviorally at risk, and that that would prepare her for her new role as a success coach. Some of the steps that Crystal took on in order to start this program was she became an alternative education licensed professional through DPI. She also started working and completed this summer, her educational administration degree. So she is a licensed principal at this time. Crystal developed all the entrance and exit criteria for the success coach program. That entrance criteria included a current GPA of less than two-point-oh with two or more failing classes. Significant attendance issues, and then teacher recommendation due to the need in organization or work completion. Exit criteria included that their GPA would be higher, two-point-five or higher, with no failing grades for two grading periods, including mid-quarter, attendance improvement of less than three absences per grading period, and the goal completion for academic behaviors such as organization. As a success coach, Crystal provides tier-two interventions such as guided study, guided resources, push-in classroom assistance, and pull-out academic goal-setting meetings. Crystal attends our administrative team meetings at the building level, and she also attends all the PLC team meetings that I talked about at the last meeting. So every Tuesday, she's coming along with us to meet with all the teams to talk about the students that she may be working with, or students that the team may be recommending that she start working with. Crystal also provides alternative education options for students who need, when in need, which would include fully online Canvas courses or providing one-on-one instruction.
So that's where the success coach position in the Acres for Joy partnership then exists. So I'm able to, every Wednesday, we take two groups of six students out to the ranch. The six-student number came from the number of seats available in the van, so there wasn't anything magical about that number. So we are able to serve twelve students. I tell the students that it's all choice-based. So I, they are invited to come, and they have the choice to come, and that goes back to that neuroscience that I was talking about and the importance of, and healing of choice. And I tell the students, I say, you, there's no, you don't have to do anything to get into the program, but you have to do a lot to stay. And when we, when we go out there, then we talk through what that means, that they need to be passing all of their classes, that they need to be coming to school, and that coming to school doesn't only mean putting your physical body in the seat, it means engaging in your learning. And they learn to, they figure out what does it mean, and what does it mean to be a student who is on a pathway to success. We have, the curriculum that we use, Jeff is going to talk a little bit about, what, so I bring them out there, I help to facilitate their learning. Jeff is really the instructor and the coordinator of the education that the students get out there.
If I may, so you've heard of, so we've spoken about the Ignite Program, which is the four years of summer school. Now we're talking about the Wednesday Program, and we, just a few weeks ago, I thought, we've got to come up with a name for this, because I keep calling it the Wednesday Program, the Wednesday Program. So I suggested the, I suggested the name, how about this? I suggested the name Stable Progress Program, right? The Stable Progress Program, to which one of the students said, well, how about the Helpful Hooves Program? And then somebody else said, well, how about the main idea? So we put it together, and we're calling it the Helpful Hooves Program, where stable progress is the main idea. All right? And in reference to the curriculum, what I, what I would say is, is this. We are hard after seeking to provide and develop a high-quality program. So that has led me to Crystal Peak's Youth Ranch, to see what they did there. That's taken me to Minnesota, to the lifemanship program where Crystal and Diana Ziegler and I went, natural lifemanship. I've been to the Red Barn in Leeds, Alabama, twice to see their program, and to Strides to Success in Plainfield, Indiana, to see their program, and gathering and gleaning. And there's this whole, there's, there's equine-assisted psychotherapy, which is something that we do not do. But what we do is something called equine-assisted learning, EAL, and Crystal referred to it earlier. It's, it's learning how to, to use horses to facilitate education and, on multiple levels. So we're using horses, but we're not, it's just not horses, what we found. We make, it's unbelievable how much ground you gain with goats and kids in a pen. I mean, they are begging to get in there. Can I hold them? Can I feed them? Could I have some of this? I mean, we're not I mean, we're not making that up. It's just it's just wonderful. And we find that just the outdoors, there's so many things that set the stage. The wood shop that we have is a rich place. You know, they're not operating high-power tools, but we're taking we're taking wood that when you pick it up, you think, what? And then they watch it being run through a planer and seeing what's underneath it. And and I'm able to say, you know, teachers see that all the time. They're always saying, I know what's inside. I know you can do better. I know you can accomplish. And you've got this piece of wood that looked just old, and why don't we throw it away? And by the time you're done, you know, it's a piece of black walnut. So there's the curriculum involves many things. Our pillars are core, the ability to connect and to engage. The opportunities that and I refer to I because often I'm the one dialoguing with this. The opportunities I have with that table of contents I showed you, to talk to kids about attitude, and not just to talk to them, to, I mean, we have pictures of, you know, six hands raised at once because we're engaging and dialoguing. And I often put it this way, if you invited me to South Middle School and took me to the library and said, Jeff, we'd like you to talk to these kids about attitude, you can you can appreciate. But when you bring them out to the ranch, and they're like, wow, what's this place? And and we engage them, and we say, hey, let's, we've just got to feed the goats. They weren't fed this morning. And we're on the wagon, and we're being going up there, and we're down here. And then you bring them into the clubhouse, and and you now you now turn to whatever the topic of the day is at hand. And it's been it's been strikingly effective.
And you see on the picture on the left is a young man named JoJo, affectionately named JoJo. And JoJo's mom gave me permission to share his story with you today. JoJo was in the Ignite program, and we have, I have a long waiting list to be in this program. There are 12 spots, and those students fight very, very hard to to maintain their spot in that program. And JoJo was on the waiting list for his entire seventh-grade year. And he would come up to me, and he would say, Ms. Rosika, am I at the top yet? And I'd say, you're not at the top yet, JoJo. Ms. Rosika, am I at the top yet? Sorry, JoJo, you're not at the top yet. The first day of school, three months had passed where I had not seen JoJo. And he walked up to me on the first day of school. He said, Ms. Rosika, am I at the top of that waiting list yet? I said, JoJo, you've got a spot, you've got a spot. He now, since beginning his time on the ranch this year, has not only raised all of his grades, but he has taken the initiative to bring another student into a resource room to get him help and himself, get both JoJo and this other student help with math. He's helping to teach this student so that they're learning together. He's had no office discipline referrals for behavior. He is he is exceptionally radiating his joy at being part of this program and his intention to stay in this program. He is not giving up that spot that he waited one year for. When I messaged with his mom today to get her permission to share his story, she said to me, when he goes to Memorial, please consider any opportunity for JoJo to continue to go to the ranch. So data, in our first year as with the success coach position, we had 21 students who were served. At entry, those students had a combined total of 49 failing grades, and at exit, they had five failing grades. So 44 classes were passed in one year as a result of this program. For the students who entered because of significant attendance, two of whom were on a court order for attendance, and the court order was not successful, at entry, there were 198 days absent and 16 F's. And at exit, there had only been two days absent and six F's. And of those two days, it includes one student who had 87 days of absence, and in the following 12 weeks of being in the program, missed two hours. And that was for a doctor appointment that she begged her mother to change to after-school so that she wouldn't have to miss school. Of the eight students who participated in the ranch program who are now ninth graders at Memorial, students, those students participate were in the ranch program for longer than a quarter, five are currently passing all classes, passing all classes for first quarter. Five of those students who before this program had not had one quarter in their middle school life where they had passed, had 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 zero F's. In fact, most of them, when they entered, were failing most of their classes. Three students during that success coach year, that academic year, achieved at least one quarter with no failing grades for the first time in their entire school history. I wanted to just take a minute to point out the fact that it is the ranch and it and it is the program, but it's it's really about the relationship. So the ranch program gives me, A, the buy-in, to be able to get students excited about maybe looking into working with me. The hook happens in the ranch. They begin to build and develop their own character, their personal character. Their drive for their to be academically successful comes as a result of that. But it is that the key point to it is that there's a human being in the building who they can go to, who they can look at and know that we've had these safe trust-building experiences on the ranch together, and it's connected. It's not separated. And so I that the success coach position, I'm grateful eternally to the Eau Claire School District and to Diana Ziegers and to Jeff Jackson for giving me the opportunity. I am completely humbled that I get to be the human being to have this opportunity to be able to witness the change in these students' lives. It's it's absolutely incredible. Just a few more stories of success. On your left, you have Alex Jones. All of these students, they're adults, were thrilled to give me permission to share these stories with you. Alex was an Ignite student. The summer after his sixth-grade year, he had at-risk factors in the categories of academic and social-emotional. Alex reported that the ranch gave him confidence to believe in himself and to fight for his goals. I gave him a journal. I gave all the students, all the eighth-grade students, a journal with a compass and an anchor at the end of last year. And when I happened to randomly be at Memorial for a different student, I bumped into Alex this year, and he had the journal in his hands. And he told me, Ms. Rosika, he said, I carry this everywhere that I go because it helps me to remember to believe in myself. In the middle, you see Blaze Sullivan. Blaze Sullivan had academic, social-emotional, and behavioral risk factors. He says that this program helped him to figure out how to develop leadership skills, helped him to believe in himself and his ability to make a difference. Both Alex and Blaze are currently passing all of their classes. And when I saw Blaze on the same day that I saw Alex, he he said, hey, Ms. Rosika, do you mind coming after school? I'd like you to look at my English paper so you could help me revise it. Of most significance also is Ariana, who is in our front row here. And Ariana joined Ignite in the first year of its inception. She she was our she was in our pilot program. And Ariana, in her sixth-grade year, had academic, behavioral, and social-emotional risk factors, 10 ODRs, and was would have been classified as one of our most at-risk students at South Middle School. Ariana is now in 10th grade. I'm right, right, Ariana, 10th grade. She has a 3.0 GPA with advanced classes. She has had no office discipline referrals since 2017, when she was in the Ignite program. She has received scholarship lessons at the ranch for the past four years, and she is currently mentoring the students now in the Ignite program. She served as a mentor this summer for Ignite students. So she is she is a pillar to our community at only 10th grade already.
We are we are nearing the end of this. I was going to bring a model ship. You'll see it there in the center of the table. And I told you earlier that I came in, that high energy and poor judgment set the context for serious consequences. And as I navigated that storm, and indeed it was, I'm not making this up, I read a poem. I read a poem by Ella Wheeler. And not only did I read it, but I saw it, and it and it and the poem is this, at least just two stanzas of it. "One ship sails east, and another sails west, with the self-same winds that blow. 'Tis the set of the sail and not the gale that tells it the way to go. Like the winds of the sea or the winds of times we travel along through life, 'tis the set of the soul that decides the goal, and not the calm or the strife." And in my storm, in my life circumstance, there was serious pressure. And what I saw in that poem is that that pressure did not determine the outcome. Because the same the same wind can send one ship east and another west. So it's not it's not the gale that determines the outcome. It's the set of the sail. It's how you navigate that gale. And all of this is embedded in the perspective that we bring at the ranch as we interface with kids who have their own storm. And I've already told you, like, we don't get into the middle of what their storm is. That's not the role there. I just make an assumption that they have one because you're because you're a youth, and you're a youth in this generation. And and so what we're going to say is, whatever that pressure is in your life, remember, we want your success. We want to, we want you to know that it's possible to navigate that to a different outcome, and that it's not just despair that needs to reign and win the day because you have this certain set of circumstances in your life. But that someone with those very circumstances indeed will go will go left in a bad way, but somebody else with those circumstances could go right, and and you get to choose. And you know that, so that that poem, as I share that aspect, one of the students in the Helpful Hooves Program, here's his quote, he blurted out, "It's not the gale that causes you to fail." And I'm like, bingo, you got it. And the last last portion here is our invitation, our invitation to to each of you to come and visit the ranch. Wednesdays, Wednesday morning, we have two sessions with youth. You can come unannounced. What I would say at this time of the year, if you do, bundle up, because the kids are not afraid to go outside. And and we use that. But please consider taking a look at us. And once again, thank you.
So at this time, do you have any questions for any of us? Or what answer, what questions can we answer?
Questions from the board? I'd like just, yes.
It's not a question, but I would really recommend going out there. The goats are not to be missed. And I'm teasing about that. But really, the interaction of the goats and the children is not to be missed, is really what I what I mean to say there.
Thank you. I'd like to highlight the fact that this is a success story that comes from within a school that figures out how what's the best way to serve their students because they know them better than anyone else, identifies resources available, and put the heart on it. And I think that that's what's that's what has pushed this project forward. We would like to thank again Diana Ziegers for her visionary work and Mr. Urin for continuing the the project. Mr. Jackson, what a powerful story. Thank you very much for your commitment and for your leadership and for your willingness to support in our endeavors in educating students in Eau Claire. Thank you to Ms. Rosika. I knew since you were in my ES490 class at the university that you were meant to do something special, and I am very proud of you. Thank you very much. And I think that the best is yet to come for you and the whole school, and especially for the children at South. So may this be a model for us to, and we'll try to replicate this successful experience. Thank you very much.
I might add one more thing. It's just something I've been thinking about since I've been here. We have a TOSA for discipline. Wouldn't it be ideal to have a TOSA for academic success? Just a thought to think about.
That's a great idea.
Yep. Thank you.
Our next point in the agenda is Democratic demographic trends and facility planning committee update.
So Phil and I have a hard job tonight because we have to follow that. So we are here to update you on the demographic trends and facility planning committee's work, and I don't think there will be as many tears in our presentation as there were in that one. So thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here tonight. As you know, Phil Lyons is the committee chair of the Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Committee. And just a quick review, the purpose of the committee really is to provide recommendations to the full board regarding demographic trends, boundary issues, capacity updates, and other relevant information for the district. And really, this facility planning is connected to the strategic plan, specifically in maintaining a safe and supportive learning environment for our students and developing a communication plan that's timely and streamlined. And those are connected to the social student social-emotional growth and the partnerships with families. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Phil today, who'd like to share some information from the committee and really a couple of questions that the committee has for the board.
Well, good evening, everyone. It was just last year and the earlier part of this year that I was before the board to share with you three significant trends that the committee felt was needed needed to be addressed. And you'll recall that the committee believes that these trends are items that deserves consideration for long-term planning and are likely to be the future drivers of a lot of our conversations. So first, we need to keep our attention on increased demand for early childhood education. Prairie Ridge has received a lot of positive feedback from the community, and we believe that demand for centralized education, early childhood education, is going to continue to grow. And of course, with that continued demand will come the need for space. Second, a number of our Northside Elementary Schools were under 65% capacity, and our plan to redraw those boundaries was accepted and was developed to address that concern. And then finally, the southern the southern part of the district continues to be a bit of a real estate boom. And we see this growing, the growing enrollments at Meadowview, Mann's, Putnam Heights, and So in July, you approved smoothing the capacity in elementary schools in the northern part of the district by retaining Roosevelt as a two-section school and re-establishing the elementary bounder boundaries in the surrounding areas. And those boundaries, of course, are going to take place in 2020. You'll recall that the recommendation from the committee also include a secure entrance and deferred secured entrance for Roosevelt, in addition to deferred maintenance. I think I saw that on your agenda for tonight. Facility plan addressing capacity issues in the overcrowded schools in the southern part of the district, and a plan to address capacity issues at 4K. The committee has spent time discussing the remaining phases of that plan, and I would like to address that tonight. So the chart that you see here was recently shared with you. It includes the most current enrollment and capacity ratings for each school in the district. The five schools whose capacity rates are highlighted in red are a concern to the committee. These five schools are Flynn, Mann's, Meadowview, Putnam Heights, and Robbins. And they're they're at or near capacity, and they do not have the flexibility to absorb overcrowding from the nearby schools. And you'll also see that we we benchmark 65% capacity, 90% capacity, and then 100% capacity to give us those those guide poles. And really, I come before you today with a couple of questions from the committee. The first question is, what is the desired capacity rate for schools within the Eau Claire? Claire area school district? Is it 85%? Is it 90%? Or is it 100%? The board's answer to that question is essential in really providing the ability for the committee to understand the problem and where we need to go. And for example, if the answer is that we want all schools at 100%, then the schools can perhaps bear the load of one more subdivision if the goal is at 100%. If the answer to that is that we prefer our schools to be at 85%, then you would have seen from that previous slide that most of the schools that we have in red are at above 85%. And so, the, the problem becomes a bit more urgent. So the committee is asking that the board discuss this and provide guidance for us moving forward. The second question from the committee is, what is the extent of the capacity concerns in these elementary schools? And what are the options to alleviate them? So with the board's direction, the committee could explore the most recent enrollment trends and projections for growth in the area, the benefits and challenges of building additions to several of the existing schools. And this option could include additional classroom space, resource rooms, possible renovations to common areas within the school. We could also explore the benefits and the challenges of building an additional elementary school in the district, exploring possible locations, the costs, and the potential barriers. And the committee could explore, if any of the other options are feasible, to meet the needs of the schools. We understand that the board will be exploring a comprehensive development plan for the district. The committee is asking if their work in these areas can continue perhaps simultaneously with that development plan. We think it has the ability to perhaps complement that work and in identifying some of those options that, that I just went through. And that's it. Maybe one of my shorter presentations. But at this time, we, we would answer any questions or, or listen to comments.
Any questions from board members? Commissioner Harder?
Thanks for the update. And just wondering if you've discussed within the committee your own recommendations or opinions on, on the question, the quantitative question that you're posing to the board tonight about capacity, 85, was it 85 versus, 95 versus 100?
Yeah. Just within our last committee meeting, we, we received these most current enrollments. And the question just came up, where should we be? Should we be at 85%? Should we be at 90%? What, what is the desire of the board? What is the direction that you would like us to go? And it was this, and what are the options that we need to, to really kind of consider to help or, or to give you some things to think about as we, as we tackle the, the capacity issues? The schools are at 94, 95% at least, one of them is. And we were hearing that, that it's, it's, it's tight. If I can jump in.
Just to add to that, Phil and I have served on the committee the same amount of time, so I think that's around three years now, maybe more. And I would say that while we do have that question about, you know, what do we as a board feel is kind of a target? And when we talk to principals of schools and when we visit those schools, when we start to see the numbers creep over 90% is when we have principals coming to us and telling us that they're having to use rooms in new ways, taking away a computer lab to add a classroom, or, you know, moving music into a different area and splitting things off where the, especially in the elementary schools, where the classrooms that are being used are not always used for, are not always optimal or designed to be a classroom. It's more of a, we have to do something because we are full. And that, just in my experience, is when we start to visit those schools that are above 90%, that's when we really start to hear those stories come down. I see Kim Kohler nodding, so I, I think I'm not too far out of range there as well.
I agree. And one of the things, when schools are over 90%, we talked a few meetings ago, we lose flexibility. So when a school is over 90%, and sometimes we would call them bubble classrooms, like grade levels that are just a little bit bigger than other grade levels, and you might need four sections instead of three, or three instead of two. There, as a district, we can provide the teacher, we can provide the materials, but in schools over 90%, we often can't provide the space. So the translation, translation then becomes, even though there are enough children perhaps for four sections, we don't have a space to put them, so they may end up staying in three sections.
And I think, I'm just trying to follow this thread of, of the question that's been posed and, and just gather up my memory of things we've talked about in the past, is that overcrowding in particular and those, those effects of large class sizes do have a notable impact on academic achievement and a disproportionate impact for students who have educational disadvantages. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Yeah. So, and we're talking about 90% being frequently where, where this, this turning point?
That's when we start to hear from, like, building administrators and, of course, Ms. Kohler was a principal prior to taking on her new role. So, that's when we start to hear that. I don't think there's necessarily a hard and fast, every school at this percentage faces these challenges, but...
But 90% was the, the litmus test for where we started to notice the capacity issues. And as we heard the 90% number coming from principals, that, that was an overcrowding issue. It started just begging the question, is 90% the right number? Is it 85%? What, what, what is that number that the board would like the Demo Trends Committee to be targeting? We, we have 65% as the floor, but what is that, what is that ceiling where it becomes a trigger to start doing something?
Any other questions from the board? Dr. Nardine?
So, I, I just want to bring up the request that the committee had made to say, you know, should we be working on this going forward? And in the, the last committee meeting, there was a lot of discussion around what would we focus on next, you know, pending direction from the board. And I think the committee talked about, you know, the two outstanding issues that are in front of us by, you know, where the 4K capacity and the capacity on the south side. And I think the feeling of the committee, and please step in and correct me if I'm wrong, was that the, the south side capacity issues seem to be the next logical step. Because while we have 4K issues that we need to keep in the front of our mind, we haven't faced the necessary change that would kind of trigger us to have to address it. We have capacity with our partner sites and other ways to go. But with the, with the south side schools, we don't have a solution that we could, with the north side schools, we were able to redraw lines and, and address those things, and we can do that, you know, with a one-year lead time. With the south side schools, we don't have a solution that involves not adding physical space. And therefore, it's going to take a referendum because we don't have the $15 to $20 million that it will take to address this in our, our capital plan, which means we're going to be looking at 2020, probably 2021, before we can really get a referendum question for it. I mean, we certainly could fast-track it, but the committee is trying to ballpark. And from there, then it's, as we heard one of our other committee members, Mr. Clements, talk about tonight, it's probably two years from when that passes until when we have students. So now, we're looking at four years down the line, and Meadowview is at 95%. Right, it's running 75% of the space that Robbins has with something like 30 fewer students. And that's an issue for, for learning. And so, I think, again, Mr. Clements brought up a great point about, you know, having a longer range, 10, 20 years, where are we going facilities-wise, district-wise? But I think, you know, from my perspective, and of course, I'm on this committee, but we need to be doing this work now so that we can be ready to go to our community with a plan for why we want to spend the money and how we want to spend it, and be able to answer those questions going forward. So, I would ask of my board colleagues to direct the Demo and Trends to, to keep looking at this work and bring it to us in preparation for a referendum.
Commissioner Harder?
Well, yeah, I'd just like to echo the, this feeling of urgency. We've discussed it in budget. And, you know, being in a relatively good place this year, great place to be, but now we're looking ahead to the future years and two years, five years, 10 years. And this is exactly the issue that came up was, right, bubbled very quickly, close to the top, if not at the top of our list, is this question of facilities. And, because we know these are big spends, and as, as Dr. Nardine pointed out, I mean, it's just, the lead time, it's, it's, we've got to, you know, we're going to be sitting at these high numbers for quite a while before we have any hope of, even if we started immediately. So, I, I think the sense of urgency is, is a very good point.
On November the 18th, we have a work session. And one of the items to be discussed is growth. So that will be the, it's the perfect timing to consider that and keep direction to Demo Trends. So, you will not have to wait much longer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. It's very helpful. Any questions from the audience? Then, our next point in the agenda is discussion on elements of coherent governance model presented at the September 25th, 2019 work session. Considering the, the time, it's already 9:05, and anticipating that this will be a long discussion, and considering that we have a work session scheduled for November the 18th, I would ask the board members to consider postponing this conversation to our work session. We have basically four points for that, for that meeting, and what we do with our governance model is one of them. So, would you, would you consider this?
Sure.
Yes? Let's, let's make a motion just to make it formal, to postpone the consideration of this item into the work session.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Thank you very much. Those who agree to that agenda change or postponing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who oppose or abstain?
Aye.
So, that will be the last point of the, the agenda tonight, requests for future agenda items. The agenda-setting committee will meet tomorrow at 8 o'clock, and we have a list of items already. So, if there is none right now, then we can move forward with what we have already. Thank you very much. So to adjourn the meeting, I would like to receive a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Klinkhammer. And a second. A second by Dr. Bika. Those who approve adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose or abstain? Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Good night.